I'd like to call. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Dover Select Board to order on Thursday, December sixth at one oh two P M. Um, this meeting is mostly a budget review meeting. We're gonna start out with capital. The capital building plan. Joe and um Dan, do you have copies of the recent capital building plan which was sent yesterday?
Uh, probably I'll have to look my email.
Okay, um. How about you, Dan? Here comes somebody, maybe this is, it might be Sarah.
Yeah, I downloaded them and read them this morning. I'll be in front of my computer in a minute.
Okay, great. And here's Sarah, so now we have. We have Joe and Dan on Zoom. Okay. Let's have Sarah have a chance to sit down. Okay, so Travis, do you wanna talk to us about the capital building plan?
Yes. So for the brick building. We have in for some more siding replacement on the backside of the daycare. And the furnaces have been a real problem lately.
I saw Nidoso the other morning.
I have called them a half a dozen times already this this fall, just to try to keep these things going.
Until we get the situation with the water figured out.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So.
So are they without heat a lot?
They've been able to keep us going. But, you know, I would really like to look into doing that this upcoming year.
Well, hopefully if we can figure.
Right.
The new well and get it attached, we can get rid of all those storage.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So there's that, and I budgeted thirty-five for that. Um, probably. You might need more, I'm sure, for the well, if that's figured into it, I don't know.
It it looks like this is does not have anything with well in it.
Right.
Um, where do we, but a lot of the well, if if the if the well. Passes all of the tests. That that might be done in this fiscal year.
Okay.
Is it still periodic monitoring afterwards then?
But that doesn't go in capital.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is getting the entrenched, getting it attached, getting it. Um, so the the periodic monitoring will have to address in the regular budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so.
So and the siding would be if the furnace is ridiculously expensive, that would be a secondary.
That will be a secondary, we've got a, Dave got me a lot faster than it's. Summer two thousand.
Okay.
We should be able to, you know, the the furnace prices I got were twenty-eight ish. In that range to do both furnaces, um, so.
So there's two separate furnaces?
Yes, one for library, one for daycare.
Interesting.
Two separate, two two separate climates. Daycare's gotta maintain a floor temperature of seventy degrees, cuz the little ones crawling on the floor.
Wow, I didn't realize that, so so their little ones aren't in the old part of the building, they're in the addition. Because.
Right, they switched them, I don't know, I can't. Off the top of my head what they are, but.
But you're saying the new section's easier to keep on.
But it's not a slab, but.
Either way, that's that's needed for the daycare, so.
Had, how long have we known this? I didn't know, I never knew that.
I didn't know until like this, the fall, when I was calling. Tasha had mentioned me and they're like, hey. We have to maintain a floor temperature for the little ones, cuz they crawl all over the floor.
That's pretty expensive trying to keep, cuz if you're keeping the air of that warm, to get the floor that warm.
Yeah, we have to have a room temperature of seventy, so.
Well, that doesn't mean the floor is seventy.
No, but that's.
Cuz I was going going down the rabbit hole of, well, maybe we should put radiant floor heat in there if that's what we're gonna do, because that's much more economical.
I can find out more about their their stipulations, but.
If if it's the floor. Then we maybe wanna look at something that heats from the floor.
Yeah.
A- as we're doing.
Probably, I'm sure we could, there was probably an. Economical way to do it with electric too, maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
But either way, um, that.
Electric.
That was dropping my attention.
Okay, I didn't, I was unaware of that.
So. And then the the library, they're really good, they have an automatic thermostat that turns down and up as as needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, yes, two separate boilers.
Okay, unless we decouple them. To zone it, if we put.
Correct.
So.
But.
Are we just gonna keep looking at oil, or are we gonna try to go to something else?
I would stay with the oil myself, but.
I think we should look at.
More other options.
We should get.
I did.
Efficiency Vermont.
Chuck, where you see.
Yes.
See it a very thorough.
He recommended heat pumps, but when I talked to Nidos. Only heat pumps only as a backup, only as supplemental, not primary.
So you could do those like in the fall before it gets really cool.
Yeah, they're great in the. They're great in the interim weather, yeah.
Maybe we should really look at, uh, look at the whole thing considering that it seems crazy to put into. Put two separate heating.
And all the duct work is there, cuz you've got central area, the air conditioner's outside, so it's all forced hot air stuff. Um, and and cooling, so.
Right.
Yeah, with with what's there. You should be able to replace.
Mm-hmm.
I have a price of twenty-eight thousand, so.
All right, one of their. There are two furnaces.
Two more modern.
More efficient.
More efficient.
Right.
They're not big dinosaur furnaces. They're giant.
Um, w- would it be worth a phone call to Chuck to see what kind of money efficiency Vermont would give us? Cuz they won't give it to us for oil.
Right.
But if they had another system.
An upgrade.
Uh, that somehow.
Yeah.
Compare that.
We have time.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Okay.
If you think that number needs to be more, I mean, we can definitely do more, but that's what I came up with to do.
Which is an increase, well, cuz we only had siding for twenty-five thousand dollars last year.
Right.
That's a lot of siding.
Right, so.
Okay, so we'll skip the police and go down and we'll come back to Randy and you just keep going on your items.
Okay, so. New roof, I have explored options for our roof on the down garage.
Mm-hmm.
And because we have the spray foam insulation up in the rafters and it's attached to the bottom of that metal roofing. There's no way to take the roof off and, so to speak, redo it, cuz it's. Got spray foam all on the bottom side of it, so.
We have to go over.
I've explored the option of, they do like, uh, for these large factories and stuff, they do like a membrane roof. Membrane or spray on, this one that I actually got a price on was a spray on. They come up, they seal every vertical and horizontal joint and they. Pressure wash it, clean it, make sure everything's screwed down and then it gets like a seal coating sprayed on it.
And how long does that last?
It's, the warranties are pretty good.
Really?
Yeah, and if we have it redone. The initial cost is like twenty thousand I got for to do that to our down garage. Um. And if it's redone within ten years, recoded, it it literally doubles the lifespan.
Hmm.
So it's, it seemed better to me rather than to do that than to try to, uh.
Is.
Put a whole nother layer of roofing on there that's.
So that, is this a new kinda technology, or they've been doing this a long time?
They've been doing it for a while.
Okay.
All kinds of references and pictures and photos and I've got quite a lengthy.
What's the warranty period?
I can't remember now, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me, but.
I get worried about these companies who offer these kinds of technologies, cuz the next thing you know, they're gone.
Yeah.
And then you've got a roof that you've got a spray on, that's got a bunch of problems with it, that's what concerns me with that.
Yeah.
Cuz I've seen this happen a lot, it's like, this is a new, it's great, it works, and then five, seven, ten years later, they're they're they don't exist anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Or they found some kind of, you know, danger or hazard, so that it, you know, and I, so. Uh, so what's your quote from them on that?
Was twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand.
Okay, and then, so you want thirty-nine thousand in storage?
No, I'd like to get. Cuz I don't know if the cost of that coating on that roofing is gonna go up, the price I got was back mid-sci.
Okay, so say we're.
So I wanna say like twenty-five or thirty for the for the roof.
Okay.
Um, but then the rest of it, I'd like to get a couple of the storage boxes, the Conex boxes from. Someplace. Um, for storage.
So I don't know anything about them.
So, um, they're a shipping container. The big steel shipping containers with the bi-fold, with the doors on the end, burn doors on the end.
And you'd rather do that than construct the building?
I would, I feel it's. Pretty cheap, easy.
Do we buy them or do we leasing them?
No, buy them, we don't. We'd purchase them for anywheres from four to seven thousand each. I'd like, I'd like to have two, but I only get one, so be it.
And what are you storing?
I think various items that throughout the whole shop, I got tires. I have two sets of tires for every ten wheeler, we have six ten wheelers. I have to house that many tires, or I don't, I'd like to not store them outside in the weather.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the sun doesn't pair well with the rubber and so, so tires are a giant thing.
Mm-hmm.
And cones and just.
Just all kinds of junk.
Oh, yeah, a lot of miscellaneous stuff.
Yeah, these. They're good for these, I don't know anything about these kinds of storage.
They're a. Almost an airtight storage container, so they'll, they're all steel. They just come and drop them wherever I build a place or.
Right, I I mean, I I've seen them around, I just don't know.
They'll last for a long, long time.
Okay.
I mean, I I can find out how long one would last for you, but.
Bring us all kinds of new ideas, Travis.
We had one that snowed for you for almost twenty years, it used it.
Did it work, did they work well?
Yeah, cuz you get all different kinds, you just like, you can get new ones versus, you know, trip ones versus abused ones. They make some that the whole front opens, one side opens, they make them that they open on both sides, you should twenty foot or forty foot. Um, if you're gonna get a forty footer, you should get the two doors, because if you, the tire you need is all the way in the front.
I I wanted to do two two twenties.
Mm-hmm.
I I got, I bought a bunch of them and they're really, really, really good. And then the other thing is, you you know, if you get one that's been used a little bit, you can just paint them. So, you know, you paint them green or brown and then they disappear.
You can move them if you have to.
Yeah, they're horrible.
Mm-hmm, okay, now I'm just asking questions, cuz I don't know anything about them.
Vicki?
Yeah?
I had them for ten years on my property, uh, when we were building it, so I could put all my valuables in it, they're very airtight. They're shipping containers.
Yeah.
And they're terrific.
The standard steel shipping container will left to its own devices and not overly exposed to the elements left well over twenty-five years.
Yeah. What's a, will be exposed.
It'll tuck it behind the building.
Yeah. Okay, so that's those, those two items are, you're estimating around sixty?
Yeah, for everything I.
Yeah.
Did a, on the higher side estimate about sixty.
Okay. Town hall.
Town hall.
Which is. You've got and trim, it's trim.
Trim and paint, yes. The trim and paint is. Did you guys figure that in? That. What, no, I did, I had the fourteen, okay. I figured fourteen, which is pretty high for those steps out here in Brunnemarkos.
Wait, we're on the town hall, we're on the ramp. Sorry, no, that's okay.
I'm on the, this building, sorry about that. Town hall.
Well, fourteen thousand.
Finish the ramp. Project.
The backside ramp, take that one down, the, yeah, it's a prefab one, stairs up.
And then, and then paint and trim. So a lot of that building is the vinyl, got vinyl siding on it, but the corners and the trim around the door, which. You know, I don't.
Which we're gonna get re-finished eventually.
Yeah, and in the product, but, yeah, there's a lot of that that needs scraping and painting. On the sides of the corners of the building.
Where's the, where?
The steeple wouldn't have to be done, because that, we did that two years ago.
Windows.
That's what I want, that's another question I wanna ask you guys about. What do you want?
Steered budget.
Yes.
I thought we ordered those windows.
We know. We never ordered any windows, we never came to a decision as to whether we wanted. To go with a local contractor or. Uh, a company that just come in and do them all.
We got windows.
Yeah. But I've got, I've got quotes for just doing the large windows, I've got quotes for doing the whole building.
The large windows, I from my, I understanding, and I might be wrong.
Yeah.
Are the big issue.
They are.
So let's look at the large windows.
The thirteen large windows.
Would everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, versus replacing other windows that don't necessarily mean, they they don't have that weight, they're not falling in.
Right.
You know, really screwing them all shut is not the right answer.
No.
No, so, um, does the board agree with that, that we should look for, look at replacing the the large windows?
Yes.
Yes, I'm hearing yes from Scott. And yes.
Yes.
The large windows.
Yes.
So that, that amount should move, should move forward.
Yes, it should.
Okay.
Yes.
Cuz we haven't spent that money.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll put back twenty back to the.
Well, it's already in this one, so.
Yeah.
It's kinda, it needs to, it needs to come forward, maybe we put a note that.
Description.
That the twenty, well, in fact, the rates you got were higher than twenty, weren't they? You remember Travis?
Yes. Yeah. I had one that was like.
Just.
And another one that was eighty.
Scott?
The reason why, it wasn't the reason why we didn't move forward, is cuz Laura was gonna do a little bit of digging about, uh, seeing if we were gonna get some money back for those or something, or. Um, from Efficiency Vermont or something.
Well, I, maybe it's cuz it's historical, I don't know. But Efficiency Vermont, I don't know if they're gonna pay for those big windows.
Well, I remember Laura was sitting in there and she said, uh, what, uh, am I wrong, what, like, I thought this was. She was saying like, oh, there might be something coming out and maybe that's what stalled our discussion.
Yeah, I remember that, cuz I think, did you write her a letter, Scott, or something, you were gonna email her?
Yes.
About it, I believe.
Okay. All right, well, we should get get good prices for the big windows and see where we go.
For the big windows.
So.
So the twenty six windows?
Uh, no, hold on, so the windows were in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Mm-hmm.
And they were in for, um, twenty thousand, I don't think that that's gonna be enough money. For windows, I, it might be, but I don't think it's gonna be.
It shouldn't be to just purchase them, if you're gonna buy them separate and then have somebody to install them, it could possibly be. But if you're gonna do it all as one shot, buy it from the person, buy it from the installer. Or have them get what we need, then yes, you're you're looking at more, cuz they're gonna improve the labor costs.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than just the purchase, if I remember right, that twenty was just the purchase.
That's.
Purchase them.
So, all right, so how do we?
We should.
Bring the twenty forward and then maybe add another ten on.
So plus thirty.
Okay.
Because even though the, they weren't expended. We should.
Showing, yes.
We should show it, because the the money is actually carrying forward too, so, yeah.
Okay.
Just as a suggestion, you know, we do a lot of windows here, we do a condo with four windows. And we're at like ten to twelve thousand, those windows aren't the same size. I mean, windows come through in last year.
You don't think thirty's enough, is what you. I don't have a clue.
I bet you, you're gonna be in the forty to fifty.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, you can put less in, but then you're just setting yourself up.
No, no, I mean, everything's just on the dark now, because everything's just going like crazy.
Yeah.
The conduit was ten dollars a stick last year and it's fifty dollars a stick here for two inch conduit.
What size are those windows?
They're big.
They're big.
They're about.
Over there, same, I bet you they're close to the same size.
Yeah.
Like, three and a half by six, I can look.
They're pretty big, okay, so, yes.
As I recall, uh, Travis Wendell, uh, did a quote on them. And the deal was, if you got the exact window, they had to be custom made. But there was a window that was one inch shorter, and if he rebuilt the sill, you would save a ton of money. So that's what we should look into, probably.
I have Travis's corporate here, for thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty for thirteen large double horn windows.
Okay. And those are the custom ones, or the?
Their replacement of the thirteen large double horn windows in the main hall and in front of the building. And install new PVC trim all the way around and cocked and painted as needed.
Okay, and that, you said thirty-one?
Yep, they said thirty-one, or thirty-six, one fifty was the cost. And window actual cost may vary at time of order.
And what was that?
Yeah, is it dated?
Yep, ten-three, twenty-two. This is not over.
So how much we put?
Forty?
Forty.
Five.
Ooh, everything.
Cuz we're not talking about buying them until the spring, right?
Them and expend the money in the.
Push the the other, the the trim and the paint back, I mean, we can just finish the ramp and do these windows and call it good.
Some of the, some of the trim is looking really bad around the kitchen and it's really getting, and some of the paint's really starting to peel, so. All right, so.
But if we just push that to July or August.
Well, this is all next year.
Yeah.
Oh, we're not.
No, we're not gonna get those windows in until the next year. So forty, let's do forty and then we'll see where we are. Forty.
Forty?
Forty. But we should put a note down below that the windows are carrying forward from twenty-one, twenty-two and the price has increased. Okay, for.
Yes.
Better fourteen, it's forty.
Yeah, yeah. It's all. No, it's an additional forty.
Oh, so fifty-four.
Fifty-four. Um, all right. Everybody get that? Okay, town office, the side doors.
Town office.
Side stairs.
So, yep, side steps where there's, again, I'm sorry, I mentioned one floor was, these ones out here.
Mm-hmm.
Replace the concrete steps and the railings.
And the doors in good shape?
The, the doors we're trying to do this year. I believe. Correct.
The front door.
Front door, this one out here.
Okay, well, okay, so we have signage in under capital for this building. And Eric just said he thought it should be under economic development to do the new sign and.
That's great.
Yeah, and then in flagpoles, so, okay, so.
Yeah, let's do them.
Well, that's, I think that that should be building.
Oh, God.
Okay, the door. The door is in this year. And we have thirty-five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't have to worry about the sign and the the flagpole.
That's great.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So you think ten thousand to do that is a reasonable thing?
Yes, and and like if we have another door that needs it, like that one or the side one with the ramp. We could do it.
Okay, all right.
So doors and. Steps.
Okay, so sides, steps and doors, it's not the front door.
Right, the front doors this year.
Right, okay. All right, so that is. Everything but. The firehouse and the police station, am I right?
Yep.
So the police station, Randy, we need to repair the ceiling tile?
So let's just go back to twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yep.
Right now, so, um, I think we can just, we'll get rid of that. Um, where we've added the floor tile and the story between exterior doors, so some of this was put in before some of the work had been already done. Like, say that, you know, when we we did the upstairs, so there was tiles there in the bathrooms, that, um. Floor, whatever, so that got be done, so that took care of that flooring. The other tile was at the bottom of the stairs, we ended up having sewer. So then, and that got repaired, so the only thing that really left was the, um. Downstairs bathroom tile in the lobby. Um, they're really not in that bad shape, maybe some tile in the front and the lobby can be replaced, but we still have, I think, like a box left over. Lefts from that, so I think we can get rid of that, we looked at the exterior doors, we just figured since we were doing stuff like that, let's just do it all down.
Mm-hmm.
But the exterior doors, um, they're they're still fine, they're not leaking in, that all goes to part of. I think the conversation too, at one point. Um. When Vermont Efficiency was here, and I think Laura was also here. Um, because we're talking about the doors and stuff, I came with that whole conversation and then she said, well, do something now with the time, I don't remember that, so. Anyway, so as far as this year, um, I'll give you back your six thousand.
All right, so we're not gonna expend that money.
Nope, nope, so whatever, we had like tile there and 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 stuff, so. Well, we're good there, um, going into twenty-three, twenty-four with the side ceiling tile repair. So again, if you look in, and you had there, it was supposed to be ceiling tile and lighting, so again, all that was put in before Vermont Efficiency came in. So we figured if we're gonna be redoing the lighting, let's just redo the ceiling tile and everything and make it all flush in. So since Vermont Efficiency did the lighting, we're done, they used a couple of the ceiling tiles we had left over, so we're not gonna redo that. Um, the only reason why five hundred dollars is in there, and you can even leave it there. Or I can just do it out of, um, my building maintenance, is in the evidence room when, um, it was. Hey, back when we had a leak or something, remember this, and he kind of was like up in the act and he fell through. I don't know if you're trying to break in to get some of the evidence or not, so he, he, so some of the the tiles in there. Um, snapped in some of the metal rail, so all we really need is to replace some of those ceiling tiles. In that metal bracket, and was looking, you know, the metal brackets around there?
I don't think that's what they're for.
So, yeah, so all basically what I'm really looking for now is for all of that, is just to, I don't know how many ceiling tiles or in a box or how you can buy them, but just. Pick up, uh, maybe just one box. Which was repaired and then have some left over, you know, in case some get busted again, so, so we're all down there, so, yeah, if you want to.
Even sound, that sounds like maintenance versus capital.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, if you want to, you can take that five hundred out.
It's good, cuz Travis has spent a lot more on all these other buildings. No, I I'd like to take that out, cuz that doesn't sound like it's, you know, it's a couple hundred bucks, maybe.
Yeah. Um, then going forward, originally, we had to redo the siding in twenty-four, twenty-five. So Dave walked around with me, um. We still like to go anyway, and we were just basically looking at it, and the bottom siding is still pretty good, truly good. You know, you walk around, you might find some little holes in some that probably need, we can just be still caulking it, but. I don't think we need to do that now, we moved, so we pushed over to twenty-five, twenty-six, and even we look at it then. And then I don't, you wanna erase that, but I think then the thing to do was put in smart shield, right Travis?
Yeah.
That's what.
That's where he used that back for the dog at all.
Yeah, by the garage, because that got destroyed, so we put in smart shield in that. You remember when that was that last year?
Last year.
Yeah, so when we do the siding of the police department down the line. Um, you know, my recommendation now, even though I won't be here, probably do the smart shield, and I don't know what that would cost. So maybe, you know, knowing that everything is done up, we're in the ten thousand, but I know. The vinyl was probably put in, actually, I think that was back in volume, to be honest.
So it's it's low.
Yeah. So we moved to twenty five, twenty six, and I mean, I even got a note here, that you probably get pushed out further. And maybe in even past then, the prices, who knows and. You know, so I'll leave that up to you guys, um, whoever the new chief is, as you know, next year looks around and looks at it. You know, um, if the siding is still good, then.
Well, let's leave that there and 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 then next year we can also adjust it if if it looks like it's an. Immediate issue.
And other than that, we're. Part of the know, we're doing pretty good there in the building.
Alright.
That's it for us.
Fire department.
Well, I'll take everybody's extra money.
So that's funny.
There is no.
So we really, ten years ago, it's been almost ten years since we. Um, put a lot of money into building, we repainted the building for the fiftieth anniversary and we. Um, the building was built in nineteen ninety eight, or was completed in nineteen ninety eight. And um, the uh, it's definitely showing its age. Also, one of the only wooden buildings left in town, wood, wood decided buildings left in town, I don't know why that. Decision was made, but that was way before me. Um, and so it needs a lot of work, so, um. I just, I just put a quick picture.
So your numbers aren't in this?
No, because like never, last year, I was supposed to come and I didn't know about it, so I just, um. Here's just one door.
Well, you have eighty thousand in this year's.
For doors.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why I wanna replace them.
Okay.
Then.
Is that rust we're looking at?
Yeah, it's rust. And and I don't know how the doors rust that hot. You know.
Ooh, that looks awful, whatever that is.
That's why I couldn't, I mean, you know, the police department, original door when we built that garage, was one of the fire departments, where it's off of that building. And I remember we replaced it, cause it rusted too, but I don't think that new door is rusted at all, so I don't know why fire department door is rust. So I'm look, was hoping to maybe go for fiberglass, because least fiberglass will rest.
So you have eighty thousand in the budget?
Yeah, and I got of um. From Vermont Doors, there was a two year old price, it's sixteen. Seventy five, seven twenty, and this was, um, I'm sorry, two year old, ten nineteen and twenty one. So I, and again, prices have gone up quite a bit, so you know, I think eighty is close. Um.
And you want a new door opener, Zen Klug opener?
Yeah, it's door openers, remotes, it includes upgrade to the, you know, the safe one, so that it'd be across the beam.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I got that, we also talked about the furnace. So those are nineteen ninety eight, it's a nineteen ninety eight furnace, it's all burn furnace. It still works, you know, the problem is it's gonna work till it doesn't work, and then you're gonna be in trouble.
Right.
So again, um, I think we got a price a few years ago, like twenty five thousand.
That's in the twenty five, twenty six, yes.
I don't know if, you know, if you wanna just keep that or not. And then the only other thing we talked about or asked about, is eventually we should repaint the building again. Um, and I think that was close to sixty thousand dollars. Um. Back ten years ago, so I don't know if you, when you wanna put that in. And I also, they talked about replacing the flooring in the main level, the office, the bathrooms, the kitchen head. Um, and down that hallway, just cause that that original carpet from nineteen ninety eight upstairs was done several years after the fact. And I'll get you some, you should cover that plus, I believe, hopefully this year we'll be able to do the. Renovating bump room deal upstairs.
Um. Well, I think we need to put painting in here, um, and I'm pretty sure that the furnace, I don't know.
And again, I, and and you know, like what Randy was saying too, you know, do we wanna, like what I did at my house is I got vinyl on three sides and. There's only place I have wood is like the front porch, because it's covered. And that's my house is twenty something years old, and we've never painted the front porch. And it looks good, so when you walk up to that house, it looks like, oh, it's wood, in the distance, rather than it looks like wood. Um, I don't know, you wanna consider, you know, like Randy was saying, we go to a different siding. So that it's not, um. You know, it it's gonna last and you don't have to paint it, if you want with the white, you know, you can replace white vinyl, cause it doesn't usually fade. You know, for up to twenty or thirty years, you can, if you have a broken piece, just. Make a little toolie, snap it off, snap a new piece in and you're done.
Yeah, I think that. But vinyl's a great way to go.
But vinyl's getting, you know, again, vinyl is.
Oil base.
Well, yes, just like conduit, it's gone from.
Right.
Well, five times.
Hmm.
And there's also other products too, there's some really good product now, you can do more of that look. So we could do that on the garage, make that look, you know, more like the barn that they wanted to originally. Um, there's also, um, they now make vinyl of a tiny form, so it looks like a regular platform. Um, it's expensive, but it's warranty for like fifty years. Um, and again, if you go with a white color or you can even get a sandstone or some similar to the color up there, the problem is I'm not sure how that fades. And then, you know, if it fades, you get trouble, the worst part of the building we have is on the side between the bank and in the far side, because. You know, when you try to push snow all the way through there, it's always the sound of a gun and it pushes truck in the building, so. Every couple of years, we wind up a side of the building there. Um, but. Those are, those are my things.
When do you wanna do them?
Well, some of you folks, so the furnace is out for twenty five, twenty six, do you think the furnace is gonna limp through that?
See, my, my computer shows the furnace is.
Twenty five, twenty six.
Uh, well, this one here shows. Um, the furnace is in twenty two, twenty three for this year.
No, this year you just have the eighty.
Oh, well, maybe we switched it, that's a shit.
Oh, this is nothing we're looking at.
Oh, cool.
Alright, so the furnace we is in twenty five, twenty six, so you, should that come in a year?
Well, yeah.
I can't predict either, but you know, if 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 we don't need it, then we don't have to expend it.
I, and I totally agree.
But again. Are we better having the money in the budget for twenty four, twenty five and then? Not having to use it?
Maybe, and then for twenty five, twenty six, put some siding, which we have no idea what kind of number was not too bad. Well, why don't you move Eric, uh, why don't you try and Marco moving that to twenty four, twenty five or twenty five thousand?
Okay.
And siding a building that big? I have no idea for the next year.
Let me break it, you just did the trim, police station. I, I mean, I'm thinking you're, you're looking at a lot of money.
Eighty?
Uh, yeah, I'm going north of a hundred.
I agree. That's.
Yeah.
That's a big building.
I know.
Especially if they're.
Are you gonna throw the silo up or the silo don't stay though?
No, silos can stay away.
Okay.
So and the doors do take up a lot of the horizontal space.
Yeah, you can be somewhere between maybe, I don't know. Be close.
Well, we can, if we put it at eighty now.
Be a start.
Twenty five, twenty six, we're moving.
Eighty.
Furnace into twenty four, twenty five. You good with that, Rich?
Yeah, and then flooring, we had how much?
Be nothing. No flooring. No flooring. So flooring. You wanna do the flooring? Twenty four, twenty five?
What's that, when you guys perform, we done it?
Morning.
Any office, did you put in the carpet in, was that a long time? You know, I'm, I would guess if I had to throw a number out, maybe twenty.
So what years for those that?
Whatever it fits in your guys' skin.
It none of it fits, so, um. Alright, so let's do furnace and flooring in twenty four, twenty five.
Okay.
At forty five thousand.
Okay.
Everybody good with that? And we'll see how this all plays out, remember, this isn't set in stone, it's kind of a. If we need it, we'll do it, if the furnace is still going by, we'll push it another year.
Yep.
Alright, so are there any other changes to the capital building plan?
We, we talked about this building already, right? We went through.
We did the.
Yeah.
The door.
So I don't know if you guys wanted it, look at like the carpet here, some teeth, some, one that's getting pretty shabby.
Well, I, I would have really liked this carpet in here.
Yeah, like in the back, the downstairs, where the high traffic. I don't know, but.
Drives me crazy is then all of a sudden the wish list happens and nobody has any ideas of the prices, and so it's kind of like. We would just.
Yeah, gotta. Shop it first.
I mean, then we have no idea what.
Yeah.
Put in and. Um. We should, once we get an idea of how many years, and I know. I remember when they put this carpet in. Um, Nona did it.
This, this isn't that old up here, yeah.
No, but we should, those are the kind of things, it doesn't have an eight year life, does have a nine year, you know, so we should actually continue to plug those in as we go out. Um. So that they come back and and look at us, so if you wanna look at the price of carpet, I'm fine with that, but we need to get some kind of decent idea.
For next year to look at it. You know, when we were combining the schools. We, we, um. We did a, uh, prior to coming to. A reserve study. And what they do is they, they don't tell you the current conditions. Other like they're having whole full shingles off the roof, they're whole finding to see what the behind it looks like. But they come in, they say, okay, vinyl siding, you know, national standards or engineering standards is twenty years. So we know the sign was put on a police station, fifteen years ago, so five years you should plan on siding. Um, today's signing is roughly twenty dollars a square foot, you have three hundred square feet, it's this amount of money in five years. You know, using three percent a year, you know, whatever, they, they actually come up with some. Uh, industry standard norms for, for, you know, increases, and then they build you a whole capital budget. Um, for all your buildings, so that instead of every year, like you're saying, okay, scroll through the carpet, how much, you'll have that. Kind of five years out, or eight years out, or ten years out.
And you can see that it's coming up versus.
You know, like, cause.
So how much did that company cost?
You know, was it two buildings, I'm gonna say seven or eight thousand dollars, maybe ten? Um, they may give you a discount, cause it's multiple buildings, I had them do like the trails edge. Which is three, four, five, six or seven buildings for like.
Do they do physical systems within the building too?
Um, they, certain things they will, you would have to talk to them, because like on the, the townhomes that we do, the. The heating plant isn't the HOA, so they don't care about that, they did do the furnaces at the school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they also, they say things like they included lighting, exterior lighting. Um, for one of the associations, so they had a lot outside lights. Um, they will say, you know, like, uh, we noticed there was, um, they do the pavement, the asphalt, they do, they kind of do everything for you. Um, there are some things that they don't consider capital, and I can't remember, like gardens, maybe, I, I mean, there was three or four things that were kind of part of the building. That they did include, because they just felt that those were more maintenance items.
Okay.
There wasn't, um, wasn't something to replace, so.
Could you give us their name, email, it didn't that?
There was two, I would use one company, um, we also hired an engineer to do one of the associations this last year from New Hampshire. And, um. Dwight had another company, we used Dwight's company for the schools, and um, I've got a company, so I can give you three names.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think it would be really worthwhile, because if Randy, you want him to do the policeman, not a. Maintenance person.
No. No, and we don't know either, I mean, you're.
That's true.
You know. So. Alright, good idea, let's get, see what that. Little run ups, okay, Marco, you think you're good with those?
I think so, yeah.
Alright. Of that?
Yeah.
Um, okay, now we're gonna move on, any other questions about capital building? That was the easy one. Okay, now we're gonna move on to capital equipment. Which. Um. You guys who are virtual don't probably have the new trade in values, which are higher. Travis and Marco just worked on those today, so we have them. Uh, and they are higher, like the dump trucks, he's expecting a ninety thousand dollar trade in. Um, so. The information you have is not what we're looking at. Alright. Let's recap this year. First.
Yep.
Okay, Travis, you wanna start?
Yep, this year we replaced the ten wheel dump truck. For what you see listed as the twenty twenty three ten wheeler.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have yet this week or next to take delivery of the twenty twenty two CB five one five international dump for one thirty five. And in July, we purchased the mower and termer for twelve thousand.
Right on.
Yeah.
That dump truck came in. Right on, or else?
Yeah.
Plus then more for the.
Well, the, no. Well, yeah, we got. Well, I budgeted one thirty five, but the actual cost due to us, because you let me take the trade. Is only like a hundred and ten. For the. International.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
The ten wheeler?
The ten wheeler, we ended up getting ninety thousand in trades, so that. Took away quite a lot of that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So good job on those.
Yeah, and then. Cross the excavator off the list. From last year's budget.
Right.
We're not doing that, cause we just did it, so then this year we're looking at. A hundred and fifty thousand, I had to up that for the backhoe loader. From, I think it was at one thirty.
Okay, hold on, before, we should put. We should put a, a note saying excavator was purchased this year, um, and was not part of the cap.
Right.
In there, so that we keep track of it.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Where is the excavator?
The excavator is below.
Above the backhoe.
Yeah.
It's the next one on.
So this year, so actually, we bought that in. Twenty two, twenty three, because of the deal.
Right.
So we should put a note saying that.
Purchased.
Purchase.
What was the purchase price?
One sixty seven. Right? Marco, one sixty seven, is that a cat, cat killer somewhere near?
But it's, but it's not in the inventory now, is it? Which one is it?
It's under twenty eighteen. It would have been in twenty three, twenty four.
Right.
But I took it right out of the list, because it's not.
Eh, yeah. So we had it at two, two forty.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Under twenty three, twenty four, so now it's out.
Yeah, so last year's town report showed that as. Yeah, two hundred and forty.
Did.
Right, yeah. And it was completely removed.
But we should actually show that with a cat, with a star or something that says we bought it. In twenty two, twenty three, and the price.
For one sixty seven. Pretty sure. Yeah, I, I don't know what you're looking at, cause the one I see shows twenty two, twenty three caterpillar, two thousand and eight caterpillar excavator for a hundred eighty. This year. Yeah, I revamped the whole, the whole everything. All the equipment's been updated, all the.
Changed the fire.
Okay, well, then, no. No, just.
It's hard, cause you're moving back and forth.
Yeah. And and.
What's gonna be?
But I think that we wanna keep track of, of that excavator and when we bought it.
Yep.
Alright. And are we happy with it?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, well, okay, so we did all that, we bought a lot of stuff this year. So now next year.
Next, this, this, yep, this coming next year. Um, twenty three, twenty four.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Backhoe, backhoe loader.
Which we had budgeted for one thirty, but we're thinking it's more like one fifty.
Correct. Yeah, price of that machine had went off, however.
The trade.
The trade has gone off.
So now.
Our trade apparently is. In my rough budget estimate from. The dealers that I'd gotten. Our trade is. Worth closer to fifty thousand.
And we had thirty five in the.
Yeah, so I put it at forty seven. Five or whatever.
Forty seven.
Yep.
Yep.
It's right here. Okay.
So.
That.
Yep, so that, and then the sidewalk plow, the price of that machine has gone up quite a lot. Um that would be that little vent track machine that Dave has and runs in the winter. Yeah, and. I didn't put a trade value, I took away the trade value for that one because I'd like to try to keep that machine. Keep the old one to to do the winter stuff, the sidewalk. Some of the salting and some of the other jobs. And get the new one and try to, you know, use them both together to get more life out of this newer one. And push the extended, extend the year of ye- years of service out on this.
Yeah, so you had five thousand in as a trade in.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's not.
If we were able to keep it, you know, and like if I. Container to put it in.
So you have fifty-six for the plow?
Yes, fifty-six for the sidewalk plow.
And it was in last year's capital budget for forty-five?
Yes, correct, yep.
Okay.
Um, so.
So that's a net eleven plus the five sixteen, yes, that's, we're not getting pro traded, okay?
And then I put in underneath there, underneath the sand screen, you'll see. Uh fourteen ton mid-sized equipment trailer, so. That's a new piece. I'd like to try to get so that I don't have to keep using our large twenty-ton trailer to move our skid steers around. Um I'd like to be able to move them around from job to job as needed with our little trucks.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so the, the key with this Travis is when you're playing around with these numbers. And you need to do it with Marco, because if that one sixty-seven for that excavator that we bought.
Yep.
That's not showing up here, and we spent that, so that's important that we put it in as as the, as an expenditure, you know.
Yeah.
So that we know moving forward what our fund balances, you know, and what what we're planning to play with.
Yep.
Um that's really important to not miss a piece that we then, if we jumped ahead.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so is that everything you've got?
Yep.
Fourteen for the trailer?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then I I I did up in the years like twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. You'll see, I upped all the ten wheelers to two hundred and thirty. Um, and then you'll also notice that I, that I took the roadside mower. And bumped that to a closer. Replacement, a year ahead on the on the replacement on that.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand. Those are expensive, huh?
Yeah.
And aren't we having a lot of trouble with that one?
Yeah, that's why I don't wanna go. To, I don't, that's why I'd like to go a year ahead on that.
Well, let's get a good trade in on that.
Yes, and there was never, there was never a trade listed before, I I think. And I put in forty thousand as a, as a trade. As a trade in value.
Wow, okay.
So.
Anybody have any better questions from Trac of Travis concerning his equipment?
Requests? We don't like changing the current fiscal year.
No.
But I think we, make in this case, we should, because it's one sixty-seven.
It's a lot.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it in cuz it moves the number.
Please, like, like a highlighter. Or put a, yeah, put a note on it.
I mean, there's a note, but it, you know, there's not also not a lot of room to play around with notes and stuff.
I know, but maybe we can.
But I'm gonna put in that we expended it, cuz it'll.
We need to.
Yeah, it's gonna.
I mean, somewhere on the page of the town report, we should be able to put it, like an asterisk with the de- definition why, why that's like that. And it wasn't in, it was moved up. Okay, all right, Travis, you good?
Yes.
All right, now we're moving to the police department.
Okay, so just wanna give you a little background, so it's not on what was printed out, but if you go back in the town report. So twenty-one, twenty-two, um, under EQ one, we had budgeted forty-one thousand. So, which would have been enough because the state bid was thirty-four, and then the cost of transferring the paintings that were enough. But if you remember, when I came back, before we changed the design, so a lot of the interior lights didn't work.
Right.
So with that cruiser, with everything we had to get new. Uh was nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, so EQ one ended up costing us forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty, where we only had forty-one thousand.
Okay.
So we were over, but then again, we also sold that car for thirteen thousand, which was only traded.
So we had, came out okay?
So we came out okay. So going forward, the car now in twenty-two, twenty-three that we, and I have already ordered it, EQ four, again. Budgeted at forty-one thousand. So with that, the base price was four, three fifty-five, we're gonna escape bid, we're getting it for thirty-nine, nine, eight. Um global, when I talked to them, we're gonna be in the same boat. They said to be on the safe side, can get a less than costume, add ten percent to what we just spent. So that's another ten thousand, one fifty-three, so basically that puts us for this new car that we're gonna be getting. Here in the next few months, it's gonna be at fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-three. But then again, the trade is only six, and um hopefully. If there's another department willing. You know, if not, then we'll see how that goes. So thus, that's why as you look out, um, we put in fifty thousand for cruiser going forward. Because of the big change, so now to jump forward to um. Going into twenty-three, twenty-four, originally, we were gonna be getting rid of two cars, EQ two, which is um sergeant's car. And EQ five, so looking at the cruisers right now, they're doing good, so what we've done is we're gonna move EQ two. From twenty-three, twenty-four over to twenty-four, twenty-five. So, and there will have two, so in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're only gonna order one.
All right, I'm having a serious brain issue because one, that's not your fault. This one that Marco sent us, and then we have this one that Travis has, and Travis's numbers are not the police department's current numbers that you're in, the one that's over here. So it's extremely confusing because now we're working on two different pieces of paper. So maybe.
One we just emailed this afternoon that has, is the most current.
Except for Travis's.
You know, it's the one I handed to you, yeah, yeah, that's not the one that I brought in, okay, she had.
Okay, so now.
Down and it this way.
So wait, no, I just, I'm just gonna make a note because I I was like, well, none of this is matching up, okay? All right, all right, so now I'm working on this shoot over. Okay. So now, I'm sorry, now, I was having like a massive, uh, this non-understanding what was going on. Give me the twenty-four, twenty-five plan now.
So twenty-four, twenty-five, right now, we're going to be looking to buy two cars. Okay, at fifty thousand, however. Um, I, we temporarily moved those there, there's a good chance, and I don't wanna say it's a definite. That one of those, again, depending on the mileage of the cars and how they're running. We may even in twenty-four, twenty-five, move one of those into twenty-five, twenty-six, we'd have nothing.
Okay.
That's a potential, but I didn't wanna do that jumping ahead.
Right.
That is like the cruiser right now, we're getting rid of. There's just issues with that, if all of a sudden we start having issues with even the cruisers, and there's a slight change, we may need to. Into that twenty-four, twenty-five, but come next year, like I said, there's a good chance we're gonna move that. And what ended up happening was a couple of times, you know, while there was a couple of years, we were doubled up in theirs because some of them were an accident, so we have to replace them. So basically, all our cars were every five years, except for which was um EQ three, which was always the detective car. And that was always on a six, seven year. So that was, you know, so there's always a chance down the road that would get doubled up too. Um and again, we're looking at the mileage and how everything's going. So basically, all the cruisers except for EQ three are for the most part on a five-year plan. Depending on, you know, mileage and how they're doing, and that's why, you know, I pushed it out this year, and then probably next year, you're gonna get. We'll see, so, um, again, we had to go up to fifty just the way, it wasn't just the price of the car. That I ordered this year, which was less, almost not a full year, and it had jumped up uh. Over five thousand dollars in less than a year. And it's the same cruiser.
Do you think you should um increase your trade in values at all?
Um, I just thought I talked over with Marco, and that's up to you guys, I guess a lot of it will depend on. What do we, the dealer, they give them scrap, they didn't talk to them again, and they're only gonna give us anywhere from three to four thousand dollars. So we're better out trying to either, like we used to, bid them outright and let the public and put a minimum price on it. And then you're hoping you're gonna do that, or this last time, we were lucky in the sheriff's department, because they're down cruisers. I don't know where they are, it might be a possibility, when they know that I've got another one coming, they might reach out and go, hey. What are you gonna offer the seller? So it's hard to say, I mean, if you wanted to, you could probably, but I would say. Going forward with these cars, I don't think I would put them out there, even if we're trying to bid it to the public. I would probably at least ask for eight, a minimum, but if we didn't, if we didn't get it. Then what do I do? Hang on to it and then lower the price, again, sort of.
I know.
Cheap, so I don't know what you want, whatever you guys wanna do, I bumped it up to eight. Um, you know, if we add up.
No, it's just something we should think about, considering how much money we got for the one this year.
Yep.
And it's, that's kind of odd, but that's okay, but. So I I'm very confused why, when used cars are, have been over the last year so hot. The the dealers don't wanna give us anything for for a trade in. I don't get it at all, because they they're constantly looking for used cars, particularly, I see it on, I mean. Some oddball things, but cars, they're still advertising sort of trade in your car.
Yeah, and I would know it, and I'm only gonna guess, because I can ask that, if the police cars, it's only because by the time you take all the stuff out. Got like holes.
Yeah.
Um where tear, like where, you know, where lights and stuff were, or cages were put in.
So we need to make a. Use. Vehicle market.
There's some used car on the state bid price, which they call a giveaway price. So they're not making anything on it, so there's no, they're giving you what really they're. They can't say, oh.
The trade in.
So, and they don't want trade in. But we used to get called from the taxi people, from the gun people, but I think Randy's thing is that he's gotta replace the lights anyways. Let him go to the all sheriff departments.
Right.
They don't get just great, act great, they need the sun with the lights and the parts you can't use, he's gonna get more money. It's out of lights are just lease stable, if you remember, and every five years, you can, the garage will fall out, so. That, cuz I asked them back when we bought this other one, because they says, well, you know, the lights, the interior lights won't work because now the angle of windshield. And I said, okay, and so I asked them, they go, if you wanted to, you could just buy the frame. You know, that will now fit that angle, take out the LED, LED lights out of that, put them in that, and now you got the labor cost. Well, the cost of just buying the frame compared to the new one.
Yeah.
Was very close, cuz then they said the new ones are on a five-year warranty. You're getting rid of your cars every five years, the warranty narrow goes out, we do all this work and we put them in.
Yeah.
And within a week, they don't work, now you gotta go buy new ones, so it's just easier to do it.
Right, I get, I get that part, so, and since Sarah, there needs to be a used police vehicle marketplace.
Right.
That that.
Like auto.
Yeah, and they do that, like. They do that, but I don't know that we do it here.
So, well, it might, we should, it should be the municipal conglomerate.
There's a website called this. That I looked into, and we were, we were thinking of putting this last cruiser on, I thought we got more. From sheriff's department than they seem to be going for, but in my research. Vehicles similar to ours that have mileage is that we usually get them, get rid of them that, go for about nine. On this unit of it, and again, I don't know how the process works, we didn't follow through with it. But I'm pretty sure there's very little overhead at any to the selling agency. And then you just put it out there, and it has to be another municipal agency, and they can bid on the, on the car.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at that in the future.
They have weights in them, you can include that too.
Which saves everybody. Perfect, okay.
So the only other thing, Vicky, with with that, if you're talking to PD, unless you're going down. Because PD technology is listed at the bottom, are you going down, or are you going just?
Oh, sure, I text it.
We're not getting anything in twenty-two, twenty-three because last year, we had two of the uh. Lot of optimal cruisers basically crap out, and so we got two, um, and actually, they came in lower than sixty-three hundred bit. For that year, we got um two uh for basically prices almost. That price was, so we're not getting anything um this year, but we're gonna maintain according to Sherritt's, which is gonna be good sixty-three hundred on.
Okay. So you need to take that out of? No, it's already, they didn't buy twenty-two, twenty.
Yeah, sorry, zero.
They're in zero.
The twenty-two, twenty-three.
Four sixty-three.
Yeah, they're leaving twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right. Yeah, leaving twenty.
All right, good, all right, fire department.
So we're on, you know, we've really put stuff way out there, so let me tell you of an eighty format. Um, it's getting a little difficult cuz there's about three of us in the county trying to standard anymore. Um and new people can hardly drive with Macs, you know, the Macs are really dark, people are squared years, it's hard to shift. Um, so I was, I wanted to at least keep it cuz it's our only truck, it doesn't have a computer in it to pull up. Um and we've already replaced computers in all the other trucks, but um. I think it's time for it to say goodbye. You remember that, we called it all over Mac because it was on a true program down this corner years ago. So I was told that we could plan on about four hundred thousand for that, we had it in three twenty-five. Um, and then you've got the only engine fire truck, which is both being twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, I was going to budget six for that, we're fifty, very.
Same year?
Yes, same year. Which is, you know, that would be, and.
Now, what about the eighty-four Mac, the three twenty-five, you said is more like. Twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah, you kind of will spend it as twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, right. Right.
I'm sure we're a year and a half, two years out. And then the Peterbilt anchor, the ninety-three, um, again, if you also look like we had ten years and twenty years. Or we refer to it, we refer to it as Peterbilt, um, so we actually got thirty years out of it. Um, and we're looking at that, you know, next year, we had a four hundred for that, that's a angry truck. And I was told to budget five for that.
Well, I wait, I wait for the ladder truck, here we go. Okay.
So then, you know, you totally won, which is for this year, which I think we, I thought we even moved. But now I'm looking at, so for this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, right?
And I thought that was next year.
Well, it probably will be next year by the time you.
Twenty, well, anyways, we should plan on two hundred for that. And like, if they do that next year, the year after, whatever works better for you folks, we're gonna make that mark with a twenty-five year truck.
So twenty-five years.
Two hundred thousand, right now, leave it where it is.
Yeah, I wanna leave it where it is.
Yeah.
And how many, how much was it again? Two hundred. Thank you, twenty-five years.
Vicky Spaver's truck, that truck. I'm gonna bump that to thirty years.
That's twenty-seven already, right?
Right, so we can move it out a couple of free years.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Part.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Yeah, we're gonna be, it fits with you folks, but we can go up to thirty because. Ten years ago, during our meeting, eleven years ago now, we did, did get damaged and wound up.
Right.
Um, we had the whole ladder pretty much replaced, it went out, back out and brasted. And, you know, the other thing is I'm calling the supervisor, just he said it's worth four hundred something thousand dollars, it's probably gonna get a new one ten years ago.
Yeah.
We, none of us will be dealing with this, so I'm gonna remind him that he owes us a lot of money for that. Um, but instead of nine fifty, I was told um. Couple people are delivering very similar trucks in the next year, and they're all at about one, one, two million.
Oh, sure.
But that's only really two hundred fifty thousand.
I know, it's just that.
Why don't you go over that number?
That million number.
But that's also why I wanna bump this out.
Oh, nice, thank you.
So what year did you want that bump to?
Well, somewhere where it's for you folks.
I did twenty-nine, thirty more years.
You did twenty-nine, thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be here.
And then um, the worst is if they end up doing, doing this year. Um. So I don't see any numbers for that, I thought that's.
Seventy, we have it in seventy.
Okay, well, this paper that I have been having.
So how much, how much you've already ordered?
No, I'm, the only.
Oh, that's not the one you can't seem to find, the truck.
We're looking around seventy-five by the time we get lights. Three years in.
In gear or fifty-three?
Yeah, once the, a lot of the, that stuff, you know, when you order a fire truck. Your basic equipment has to be centered with the ladders, the pipe holes, the axes, so that's all. Um included in that price, the only thing that is exposed, and you guys about ten years ago, when we buy a bunch of clothes. And you guys about ten years ago, when we buy a bunch of clothes, I know for that in the next couple of years. But, um, for right now, that that should keep it pretty much equipped too. Um, the only thing it does include is radios and lettering, the department, the association usually picks up the lettering because they don't like my little box sticker lettering. Um, and then the radios, again, we had this conversation today, I'm kinda. I'm sure we placed all the radios in the truck, they're probably all eighteen years old. They don't get moved, the vehicle, the police department does. But they still start finding everything here, think who doing every other change or where.
New radios?
Yeah.
Every time I have, you, you got our last radio.
So they got ten years old? See, we're having no luck with all of their radios. So I don't know what it is, because I bought them the same time about police department radio.
Is this all under the gear? Rich, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, well, so this is all under gear?
No, no, those are, I'm just looking trucks.
Okay, so. For all.
No, each truck.
Each truck.
But again, I don't know what I need for radios, because if the police department goes slow, oh, man.
It's not, yeah, let's figure out what we're doing with.
Right, because that's kind of a whole, and again, you know. So I just, if like we go over the sheriff department, then I don't need the dual band radio system because. The reason we have the dual band now is key age lays on one frequency and the town is on another. And it's important for us people not to fuck with the town, but neutral. And dual band, and the dual band radios will give us a hard time because it's two radios going into one head. And it just creates a lot of issues, police on fire trucks, maybe it's. The bouncing, so I haven't included any radios in the purchase price. So that's my fire trucks, so.
Okay, may I get a question?
No, I was gonna comment, I think I mentioned before, so the other thing with those, this whole dispatching, it's grant money. Is for infrastructure. Or it is for like potential videos, so. I mean, what he may be looking at, and we go save it. I'll say the sheriff's department, you know, some of that grant money that they're gonna get for that is for the infrastructure that can help pay for. Some of the. Radios and equipment needed, so, yeah.
Did you hear that piece on Vermont Public? That that reported about the dispatching? Um, basically, they, the people all walked out, all the, the, the group that was in trailer and said, this is way too much. Yeah, but it was on the radio, and so it went, yeah, all over the state that, that, you know. We're, it's, this is where our pay grade, we can't do it, and so. I mean, it really throws it into, it needs to come more into the front light of the, the state news about this dispatching. And it's really hasn't been, so I was excited to hear that they actually covered it. And the person said on the thing, I don't know how much this is gonna cost the state. But it's multi, multi millions of dollars.
And that's why, because Katie had listened to it, and that's why I mentioned it the last meeting. Alright, meeting that they were, they sent in the report December first. It was, they're not gonna legislate, it was not gonna like it because. It's like above their heads.
Price tag was so large. So I'm guessing not a whole lot's gonna happen very quickly. Back to Rich, sorry.
And the radio thing.
And your air packs.
No, let's go, I want to be fired here in your past in a second.
Okay.
Where we all live with the truck.
Yes.
And again, I, it, I wasn't, it wasn't a bar, and I wasn't being mean or anything, but. Really, the fire trucks, I don't mind moving them around a little bit here, to here or there. Like if he has issues with cruisers, or he has issues with dump trucks, and maybe you can bump something up to that box. Put them where they fit best for you.
Well, at least this year, you are buying a few things.
Yeah.
And next year, you're buying some.
And the only thing I bought since I've been chief, I bought, you know, I bought engine one. Um.
So that.
We've done some refurbishing. Again, I would almost refurbish again, but what we're finding, and I think Travis can speak to it, it helped me a lot. Is that, you know, it's getting harder with parts and then when things are down, like, you know, we don't have a dedicated mechanic, he doesn't have like a Bobby Holland in the garage anymore. So it's hard for them to do it. He winds up having to do most of the stuff for me. While we run into twin state truck, which takes two of us to go over for a couple of hours, so. It, it is time to start moving that.
No, I think we, um. Thank you for, once again, moving out the ladder truck.
But eventually, it's.
Eventually we're gonna have to do it, I know, but it's such a big expenditure. Um, and, and with the, right now with the prices, everything's so escalating and it, it's really hard to keep up with it all.
But just remember when I bought that. Spec that truck out and made the deals, you know, with the slide board. You know, we paid for something for it because we laid the money, we put the money up front. For them to build it. And it saved us a lot of money, and we were almost two hundred thousand, I mean, prices. The group before me got was in the six to seven hundred thousand, we brought it in just a little over four. So again, these are just budgeting numbers, we won't know until we get there. Um, and again, if, you know, they were envisioning a basket, but, you know, a lot of us. We don't use truck all that much, it's kind of like his bulldozer or certain pieces of equipment. Can't plow a road with bulldozer, but you also can't level dirt with a plow truck, you know, and so. I remember when bulldozers, like five hundred hours on, after ten years. Do nothing, but when you need it, you gotta have it.
Right.
So that's that, so we buy a year here. And not to pick on Randy at the town office, but when I saw PD technology in town office computers at sixty three hundred, two thousand. So it used to be that, you know, back in the Philharmonist days and Don Avano and stuff, and. When I was doing capital budget, we didn't put anything in capital budget that wasn't over, over two thousand dollars, because. If it was lower, we were supposed to. We're really into our operating budgets. Well, I had fire gear for ten years because what happened was we got so far behind, I needed a lot of fire gear. So fire gear runs about three thousand dollars instead, I have around fifteen to twenty people. So we have sixty three thousand dollars for fire gear. I'm not sure, um, if buying all fire gear at the time, because what that does is, is it's. It size the people. But let's say you were all firemen this year, and buy all the fire gear, and in two years, three quarters of you are gone. And a whole new group comes in, you know, I gotta find somebody his size, their size, their size. You know, so it always doesn't work. I'm wondering if it would make more sense, and again, this is just for you folks. To think about, so we put like six brand in every year for gear, and I buy two sets of gear every year. I do get a little better price when I go in and say I wanna get, you know, fifteen to twenty sets. But the problem is then, like, I order gear, and then by the time it came in, two guys are gone. One of their gears still sitting down there because they were half the size of Jeanette. And they can't find any way that size anymore, so. And then I get stuff that, you know, would have fit Travis, but then I get somebody like Jeanette, and it's, there could be two of them then. So I didn't know what your thoughts on that. The, the air pass. What, I'm sorry.
You should buy uniforms to the police all based on one size, just buy them all one size, and that's. Yeah, so it does make sense to more buy the gear based on.
So you can adjust to the staffing.
But if I come in where. You know, it's, it's, um, I've got a whole bunch of new people, and it makes sense to buy ten sets. Then I can come in a year before, but then it really doesn't help them balance the budget. So I, I just wanna throw that.
Well, I hate to buy gear that doesn't fit anybody.
And have to sit there.
So what, so how long do you determine if somebody's joined the department? That they deserve a three thousand dollar settlement?
Have to have it within a couple drills and joining, because if there's a fire, I can't say Marco, go like that, go play fireman.
No, 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 but I mean, they don't have a whole lot of, I, I mean, do they, how quickly do they get to the, they're going to the, the fire and they're actually gonna be involved in it?
Couple drills.
A couple drills.
It's barely some.
How quickly can fire gear come in?
Well, it's three, three months, but we, we try to thin what stuff that's down there, so maybe your coat's a little tight. Now, but you've got a new one coming, or you've got. So the way NRP is, remember, they just make recommendations, but every five to six years, they come up with a new. Standard. And so in twenty, say twenty ten, they come out with a new standard. So anything from the twenty five standard is okay, because you go back one standard, so it's a ten year gap. But it's so, but in twenty fifteen, that twenty five standard isn't any good anymore, it's only the twenty ten and the new twenty fifteen. I still keep the twenty five, twenty two thousand and five stuff. Because if you're just gonna be outside, you're just gonna run a pump, or you're gonna come help traffic. You can wear the older stuff. I try to keep the guys that actually put an air pack on and go in the building, or be on a hose line, I get them their gear. But then sometimes, you know, it makes your, you have classes, you know, like it's the, um. Oh, they got new gear, and all I do is drive truck, and I can't get new gear because like. Say, well, I got a new couple of interior guys, I bought them gear. Travis, you just drive a truck, you keep your old gear for ten, fifteen years. Um, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of balance to it. So again, it was, it's kind of what you thought. I think the air packs, I would like to keep there because it's nice not to have different air packs and those standards change. And that's a couple of years down the road, I'm just, I'm gonna suggest that we go without ten percent, more than twenty on a year. Uh, on the air packs. And the gear is up you folks.
Well, it's in there for this year, so we can't. Or that, that, the coming year, or this year, so we can't mess with it, so if you spend, whatever you spend is what you spend and.
Or I can leave it and. Unexpended money, and then before, I'll just put.
Yeah.
A sixty three hundred dollar line item in my budget every year.
We can do that, we'll put sixty three hundred every year.
Yeah.
For the, just do it, yeah.
And.
Starting next year.
Yeah.
Starting this coming.
Right, so then down below.
Yes.
But I mean, that's been a case. Fifty three thousand, you know, right off your budget, that thing called. With Travis is investigating.
Okay. And now your trade in value is rich.
Trade in values, again, I think like Randy said. They're twenty some odd year old trucks, I'm hoping if I can get. Ten to fifteen thousand a vehicle we're doing well, for some reason, he just wants to.
And then the ladder truck, we have it at two hundred.
Yeah, well, that's because that guy in Connecticut scored four hundred ten years ago.
Okay. It's really hard to know.
It is. I wish I had that crystal ball.
All right.
Two hundred, right, the ladder truck?
Yeah.
That's what it's.
Yeah.
And actually, probably that eighty four Mac and Peterbilt. But the, the other trucks have been mentioned, or the, you cut them ass, you know, we can rule those. Nobody makes dump trucks out of those. For tractors.
All right. Anything else on equipment? Okay, so Marco will get these out to us.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna. Send everything out tomorrow morning and to everybody. We have now.
All right.
So can I, one quick thing, I didn't bring salaries last time, because I didn't know what your thoughts were increases.
We don't know, we haven't had that discussion, we are in a listening phase right now.
I have like two minutes just to run through what I think for salaries and you guys help me.
Do you have copies of that?
Uh, I don't, but I'll leave with Mark when we make the copies. But just so you know, what I did was I broke it up into different segments, broke it up into administration. With our new administrative assistant. Broke it into stipends, I broke training down for both search and rescue, fire. Fire drills, outside training, work details, off the means, calls. Uh, and I just, I kind of went through what we had for the number of people attending drills lately. Uh, and I come up with a number that's about a hundred thousand over what we had last year. But I've been running about sixty, fifty to sixty percent, which puts being the ballpark. I just wanna be folks to look at this and see what you thought of it. And see what your, your ideas are, so.
Do you have percentages on there? Increases?
No, because it's hard, because if you do a three percent increase. I'm not, probably not gonna give you guys an increase this year, because. It moves it up maybe sixty cents, and then it becomes harder to do payroll, because instead of. An even number, it becomes, you know, like twenty point six times three point five times. So, um, unless you guys are gonna do a ten percent increase, which would be like a dollar. Then I wasn't gonna do any, but I just wasn't sure what you all were thinking.
We haven't had a discussion as a board about, at this point, we're listening to everybody's. Wish lurk, yeah.
Well, my wish list is we're in pretty good shape. I would like to increase though. And, and I just, like I said, if you're increasing ten percent. Across the board, then I'm probably pretty close where I want my salary to be. Based on fifty percent of, of the number I came up with. But, um, if you're only thinking like two percent, then I can't do that. And I'm gonna ask for more money, but it's not because I'm getting raises, it's just because we're getting more people with ten calls. We are paying, um, and we're just having more people in the rest of the training, especially during COVID. And last year, you know, we were really close on the budget, and last year was almost a long.
Okay, so leave that, and that, that's a kind of. Narrative that we all are gonna need to have to try to remember now, so, um. It'd be nice out of a paragraph to go with that, that's not necessarily. You're moving people up as much as you are having more, a bigger population in the fire department. Which, which makes a big difference too.
And also, you know, I had a few off script positions that we had over COVID.
Okay.
That, you know, if I feel that increase.
Okay.
So two lieutenants would increase in almost, you know, a. Probably in those ten percent.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'd appreciate that, just. Or it's just a summary of what you just told us, because now I've gotta try to remember that, Sarah's gotta try to remember it, and Scott and Dan. Just keeps coming in, you know, and at, at some point, the, the.
Floods over the transit.
It like, whoa. All right. Okay, so then we need to.
Paraphrase loosely.
To pull it out and make sure I keep it with the budget. Yeah. Yeah, the. All right, then we're gonna move on to capital paving.
Thank you.
You guys wanna please.
The phone caller.
Yes, thank you for that, I, I know there's a lot, a lot changes, some of those are in personnel policy that I never.
They look really nice.
Thank you.
I don't, well, they're from the.
Thank you.
All right. Um, capital paving for twenty three, twenty four. Um, why don't you give us a recap for this year grant, and we get, to get the grant. Right, here we get the grant.
Yes.
Um. So we paved more than we had planned to pave.
Yes, quite a lot more, we didn't. We were able to do the handle road, which we had budgeted for, but that was taken for, taken care of by. A lot of it was taken care of by the two hundred thousand dollar paving grant we received. Um. We did. Blue Brook Road. Um, Circle View. Heritage and. Uh. Sugar House Road are all connected now. Um. We did Maple Hill Loop. Uh. Circle View and.
Bruce Haven?
Bruce Haven, yes. Those were all gone. And we did the. That, that was still down at the town garage too.
Okay.
And going forward into twenty three, twenty four. I'd like to do Bouchard Road. Um, crosstown.
So that's, that's, it's. Tell us if these are currently paved or not, is there any new paving?
No, no paving.
Okay.
No.
That's.
Nope, we're gonna get back in the scheme of take care of what we got.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Bouchard Road overlay. Uh, crosstown country club, that will be an overlay on both of those. Dover Hill Road. So Dover Hill Road. From. The Sugar House intersection, somewhere there where Bob and I had stopped paving a couple of years ago. I would like to mill the two inches step. Clear to that seam just below where Holland Road goes out. Um. In doing so, I'd like to get rid of the wheel. Get rid of the wheel tracks down over the hill towards our down garage from the school. You'll notice there's pretty good wheel ruts in the, in the asphalt there.
Mm-hmm.
Water runs down, hydroplaning, problem solving, keeping it clear. Um, I'd like to mill and fill that back in with two inches of asphalt.
We have done.
Did that years. Yes.
We have done. And done this and done, I mean, we did the concrete, which was a disaster. Um, yeah, so. It seems like we do that road all the time.
Is there an inherent problem with it? That, like.
It's been, it's been ground, it's been like you guys have.
We've done what we can.
You've done, yes, you have done in the past a lot with it. I I just thought instead of trying to layer on another layer.
Yeah, I I get it.
To 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 grind it out and. You know, instead of building it up.
Oh, yeah, I I get it. I just don't understand. I mean, we have put a lot of time and resources into that road and it gets a lot of traffic. And it got a lot of traffic with the bypass.
Yep.
Under nine, a lot more traffic, people were coming this way. Um, because of that.
The, the other thing that has been saving, our saving race, I guess, in that aspect. Is that. Amolified asphalt that Bob and I did a few years ago and started doing.
Mm-hmm.
The same stuff we just had finished up last, this last summer, but would have been summer four. Up on Valley View.
Mm-hmm.
That amolified asphalt has. That's injected into the base material, so that's a full depth grind. And that gets injected. That is like.
You're happy with that?
Yeah.
Have we had it on?
It's building up well.
Okay.
Um, I mean. Ultimate solution, yeah, if you wanted to do that, I could. I could rework the numbers. But they're gonna. It's gonna be costly.
Yeah.
Um. That's.
Well, that's probably as as our town roads go. That handle.
Yep.
Um, what other roads get as much?
Right, they're our main thoroughfare, so to speak, you know, they're our main road, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Are there any more grants potentially?
I I I plan on applying for another class two paving grant. Right, right. Receiving one last year, no guarantee we'll get one this year, but.
No.
Try.
Good. All right.
Um, so there's a milling fill on that. Section and. Down on the corner by Taff Brook. To continue from there to the town line in New Fane. To finish resurfacing the top of that, that was just an overlay.
Mm-hmm.
And while we were down there, I wanted to ask you guys about doing the Eastover Firehouse.
Hard one.
Yes, it's very broken up, very damaged. Um. Is that, is that something that we paid before? I don't know. It must be, right? We did.
I, it was before me.
It was before me too, so that's why I'm asking. Um, that's not figured in here, but I can. Figure up numbers for that.
They can't be that much.
Um, I I actually have the number here. It would. Because that that's labor intensive, because we can't just put another layer on it. We have to take out what's there, either mill it out while the milling machine is here in town. Or take it out and. Dispose of it at our town garage and then fill it back in with new asphalt. Otherwise, you're gonna have water and seven buildings, we can't.
Has the department asked for this?
But, yeah, they have.
So.
Yes. They have and and we maintain it, so I'm kind of worried about they. You know. Ripping up a plow or.
Yeah, I get.
It's it's had, it's it's got most multiple patches because we ran the uh, the generator.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's been patched a lot, but it's it's really broken up.
All right, so guess. How much you think that would be?
I'm, I'm looking at tonnage to do just the firehouse, a hundred and nine tons extra. At eighty-seven per ton, you know, ninety-four hundred dollars and then. To keep the milling machine, I'm not saying it's a. A full day project, but to keep the milling machine in town another day is also another nine thousand.
Holy moly. So you're looking at, looking at like twenty.
Well.
Eighteen.
I had, if you look down at the bottom. Under today's costs. Of our eighty-seven per ton. The two-inch milling Dover Road should, instead of reading zero, it should say twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven in um, milling in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, uh. Yeah.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, it should say twenty-seven thousand for milling.
Right.
Okay, and you would add nine thousand to that. If we decided to do the fires.
So.
And it could be, it could be less. Now, that's a, if if it took me less time to grind that much. Now, but that's. The rough estimate I got of nine thousand per day. For grinding.
I'm adding that, I'm adding including Eastover Fires.
Yeah.
And we need, how about the tonnage, is that in there anywhere?
The tonnage is not in there, no.
So we need to add.
Putting a hard number.
I put in a hundred and six, I put in a hundred and nine. Tons for that.
Hundred and ninety.
Hundred and nine.
Nine.
Yep, hundred and nine.
So. Add it to the five eleven eleven. Five eleven, five one eleven. Well, we need to, if we're gonna do the fire department, we need to add that line that made on here.
Right.
So we can keep.
We would need, we'd want to add it.
Fire department parking lot.
Yeah, so I added two inch, so in the two-inch milling Dover Road.
Yeah.
But it also includes Eastover Fire.
Okay, yeah.
I added, so it's thirty-six thousand in twenty-three, twenty-four. Put a hard number.
Yeah.
Six thousand. And that tonnage of five thousand, one, 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 that includes it or?
No.
No, that doesn't include it.
Twenty.
How many tons?
One oh nine.
Plus one oh nine. So five, two, two, oh.
Okay. What does that do to the number?
Well, let's see, I don't have to put the thirty-six thousand in because then it um. Because it picks it up with the tonnage. I'll have to look at it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Still be under. I don't want to count it twice. Should still be under the six hundred.
Mm-hmm.
What I should do is add the two-inch milling up to where the roads are. So that it.
Okay.
You know.
I'll just put it down there because that's where the grinding price was.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that I just took whatever you had in there before for grinding.
Okay.
And I said. Two inches of milling.
Gotcha.
And I just kind of, I should have put Dover Road in parentheses, that was what the milling was for.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. Um. So what did we pay per ton for? Asphalt this year?
Seventy.
So this includes the ten percent?
This is. This is what. I had, I talked to a vendor and this is what he sent to plan for.
Okay.
Eighty-seven per ton.
Okay.
That's what he said to, if you budgeted for that.
Okay.
You know.
Okay, I just was curious where we got that.
Yeah. That came from a current, a current. He he came and rode around with me and we went through and I got a current. Quote, so to speak, on all of it. Yeah.
Okay, and then talk to us, so then the next year for Dover Road.
Now, I didn't go a year ahead. I didn't go into twenty-four, twenty-five.
So we have, so, but this is a question somebody's gonna ask at one of the meetings. So we got eighty-four hundred. Feet and then we have, then we have ten thousand five hundred and sixty.
Right, that should, that'll change, that's not.
Well, we need to.
I can adjust.
We need to bust that.
Yeah.
You know, that's like, wow, we got. Okay.
I just took care of what we.
It's okay with the road that we haven't, like Colonial Ridge is on for the next.
Right, yeah.
But, I mean, that's a lot of, that's like four miles.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
None of that should be correct.
Okay, all right.
That's all to be. Determined again, so to speak.
Okay, and then we're still, so then things are still, Snow Mountain Village, Mount Snow Village start. North Street.
Mount Snow Village has never been paved.
Well, it's on here. Mount, Mount, is it supposed, is it Mount Snow?
I guess it could be that first flat.
It's only eleven hundred feet.
Yeah.
So. And then we have um. The north access.
Yes, that it will stay on for next.
And then we have Snow Vita.
That will stay on.
I know people have complained about.
Yes, I want north. Access and. Yeah, all.
Okay, so.
All handled, yes.
With the, with the. Um. Not Snow Project at Snow Lake, is the south access road gonna get paid? That's not gonna happen anytime soon. Not any, not in two years. I think the after, after the, after the dam is.
I would say after.
Yeah, definitely.
I have no plans of doing it before or not.
Oh, no.
And I I don't think it's in any danger of being.
No, I'm just. To them being, working on that project, if we should be. I think that if that, if that dam is done in five years, that's a short timeline. Okay, I'm serious.
Let's check.
Yeah. Yeah, all right.
Yep.
All right, that sound good?
Um. Yeah, and then Tanner Road, Tanner Road, you'll see there, it's bottom, that's just a resurface.
Okay.
Um, and and I. Depending on how these numbers come out with. With doing the. Firehouse.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to, if we can budget for the six hundred thousand still. If we use any extra. Like, if we get done paving and there's extra money in there, would really like to try to do something. Some protective coating, seal coating, crack sealing. Anything like that to. Go along the life of our, some of our blacked out roads, even if I just. Get a quote and say, hey. We have this much to spend. And obviously I'll go out and get quotes for you guys, but we have this much to spend. How many can you do for us? Let's start working our way around on doing some. Uh, you know.
We have done crack sealing in the past.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, if there is any extra left over after we get done with the paving projects, I'd like to be able to. Fill out the remainder of that. Budget with. With, with a protective. Preservative measure of taking care of our backups.
Okay, so.
I can't give you a hard number on that.
No, what I'm saying is. We should. Underneath here. Um. You know, because you're not even, at this point, we're not that close to six hundred thousand.
Right.
Um. Put crack sealing as a, as a sub.
Crack sealing, sub code, seal coating, yes.
And we met some crack sealing.
Right, yeah, well, that sounds.
And then, then we can. Um, put even a small figure in there now as a placeholder, you know, and and if we don't, if we don't have the money for it.
Then so be it.
Then it goes into.
That's the thing that becomes expensive.
Right, right, but if if we have it in there, then that's something we know that we're.
We know.
Doing, and then we're spending money on it and then we keep track it going, you know, like, I don't know the last time we did the crack ceiling, I re. I know we've done it.
Long ago.
Yes.